Mayor and council members and city staff. My name is Bob Strike. I reside at Six Parkway here in Larkspur. And I was one of many that was affected by the electric power outage that started on Saturday morning. And then trickled through into Monday afternoon and Monday evening, maybe longer for others. But I have 50 years in the electric utility business. And I was quite concerned. I know that was a major storm and they had a lot of trouble spots. And that's typical. I was just concerned about the outage that affected Larkspur and Coeur d'Alene. Because of the volume of customers impacted and the duration of the outage. That is quite non-standard for electric utility emergency restoration. Once again, I understand that they had a lot of other troubled places. But they did good to assess where the damage was up in the Trapman neighborhood. And they did get a contract crew up there, about a 10-person crew. So they did respond the morning of the Saturday when the event first happened. It was a tree limb that came down and hit mid-span on bare 12,000-volt wires up there. And it burned one of three wires down to the ground. Typically, a crew would start and they would restore power by getting that wire back up and getting all the customers back on. But it was taking a little long and I'm real curious. I love to see utility work going on anyway. So I drove up there and the crew was saying, well, they told us to replace a couple poles while we're up here too. Because it's kind of hard to get up here and the power's out anyway. You know, we might as well get some other maintenance, planned maintenance done. And that really caught me and concerned me because, you know, I hear on the news of power outages lasting three to seven days these days. And I was like, I don't know. I know we're in climate change and heavy storms, but this just doesn't seem typical or, you know, appropriate. And, you know, even when you listen to PG&E, they say their number one is make safe, keep the public safe and restore power as soon as possible. And it seemed like it was conflicting priorities that they were doing on that day and throughout the full three days. And, you know, the hill is full of service-age wood poles up there. And I don't blame them for wanting to replace any. But when you have, you know, over 500 or 600 customers, a lot of commercial on a holiday weekend. That's when you really step up and, you know, restore that power within four to eight hours. Which if they just repaired the wire that was down, that could have been possible. So I think, okay.
As you know, PG&E is its own entity for power. But I'd love to circle back with you about this a little later. If you just send me an email on the website and I'll circle back with you about it.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
All right. Anyone else in the chambers? And thank you for coming. Anyone online?
This is from our Zoom audience members. And our first comment will come from caller 1402.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to echo what the prior speaker said. The PG&E, I mean, the outage might have been unavoidable, but PG&E's information was abysmal. It was both conflicting and inaccurate. For example, I had different information and different access procedures by PG&E depending on which telephone, which house I was calling from. PG&E told me that at one address, my house was the only house that was out. And the problem was with my house and my breakers, when in fact, the entire neighborhood was out. I could give you other instances, but the bottom line was that PG&E's, oh, and then toward the end of the day, you could not even report something through their system, through their AI-recorded system, or get information through that system. So PG&E's conflicting and inaccurate information turned what should have been a relatively routine, albeit too-long outage, into something that was very confusing and scary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. I was out of power for two days also, so I understand where you're coming from with that. Anyone else online? Go ahead.
I'm looking for any additional raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no further public comment.
All right. Thank you. I'll close public comment at this time. That brings us to item three, which are presentations, and we don't have any. Item four is consent calendar. The consent calendar is for items that are pretty routine. But it also is a possibility for public comment and for a comment by the council members to pull a topic. Do any of the council members want to pull any of the items? Nope. Seeing none? Anyone in the audience or online want to pull one of the items to discuss from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion for passing the consent calendar.
Motion to pass the consent calendar.
Sarah, a second?
I'll second.
Allison, should we do a roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Margulies?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andre?
Yes.
Mayor Wayne?
Yes. Brings us to item five, City Manager's Oral Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, want to remind folks that the city services, we tend to close most of our administrative operations during this holiday period. So we will be close to the public starting this Friday, and we will resume full operations on Monday, January 6. Now, it doesn't mean there aren't people available. And if you have some emergency or essential need, please continue to contact the city staff. We'll respond. Additionally, you may see activity in a lot of our facilities. We use this period not just so we can take some time with our families, but also we do deep cleaning of our facilities. The folks in the library will probably be in there thinning out the collection, taking, so we make room for more materials. So there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes as well. And then wanted to highlight for folks, if you haven't heard, that at 6:00 PM on Friday, we hope you'll join us under the lights at Piper Park for Hot Cocoa and a chance to gather his community and thank the many sponsors who have made that new tradition flourish and really become robust. So that, Madam Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you. Any questions to the council of that? Nope. That brings us to item six, which is council members' oral reports. I know Sarah has just joined us, so she hasn't attended any committee meeting. So unless you have a report, I'll... Stephanie, anything?
Not today.
Scott? I just have one. I sit on the DC3, the County Disaster Council, that I co-chair now with Supervisor Rodoni. And we had a meeting last Thursday. And of course, a lot of the conversation was about the tsunami warning that we all got. And also about the warning system in general. After the main part of the meeting, we got a tour of the new Office of Emergency Management's 911 Call Center and their new Response Center. And there's a brand-new room that is for cities and towns in case our cities and towns are affected by a disaster and we lose communications, or we need a place to organize and distribute information. At the county level, there's a brand-new facility for us there. You might have seen the Marin IJ yesterday, or was it today? I think it was today, where the cover story was about this new center. And I've asked if any of my fellow council members would like a tour. We can arrange a tour of that. It's at the Los Gamos Campus where the Sheriff's Department is. It's a pretty state-of-the-art, like, very sophisticated place. If you're ever interested, I'd be happy to arrange a tour of that. And also to see the new area that is set up just for cities and towns, which would affect us remotely. So that was all. We're moving on to seven, public hearing. And per the city manager, it sounds like 7.1 has been resolved. But could you give us a little update on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is no need to hold this public hearing. The subject to the hearing came to the city today and made restitution. So the issue at hand has been resolved.
Okay. Do we need to do anything, Sky, other than just take it off the... We can just move forward?
You can just move forward? Well, there's no need to hold a public hearing and there isn't any other action required on the item?
If there's a hand raised that wants to speak on this, since it's removed, I guess it's not relevant anymore.
Since you're not taking up the business item, there's no need to allow for public comment. But if you would like to receive public comment on the item, since it was on the agenda, you can do that at the mayor's discretion.
We have one raised hand. I'll take one public comment, and that would be Mr. Holmes. Are you have something to say on item 7.1, which has now been removed from the agenda?
Yes, James Holmes, Larkspur. I have no particular problem with this proposed action, but I would like to offer some observations on the general subject matter. First, neighbor complaints of the sort that spurred this enforcement action are often animated by personal animosity. Hopefully, such complaints about weeds or whatever are weeded out, so to speak. Second, some of the fire safety requirements, such as no branches over hanging decks or gutters, though they're not at issue here, would be arbitrary or unreasonable if applied in areas where huge tree canopies arch over houses below. Third, a big difference exists, in my view, between actual weeds versus so-called overgrown vegetation. An equally big difference exists between so-called overgrown vegetation that is live versus vegetation that is dead and hence a legitimate hazard. However, term "overgrown" as applied to a live vegetation is a subjective conclusion which discounts legitimate aesthetic preferences and privacy concerns. And lastly, but by no means least, not all Larkspur's residents are what IJ columnist Dick Spotswood described in a recent column as representing a noticeable increase in average wealth, whose house workers' comings and goings add to traffic. Rather, some residents, perhaps decreasing in number but still present and accounted for, and perhaps tending to be aging longtime homeowners now alone, are just doing the best they can with the limited energy and resources at their disposal. Also perhaps true is the old saying that you can't get good help anymore, at least not like you used to.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Was there some...
Yes, Madam Mayor, I feel based on allowing that speech, it's necessary to enter into the record that an abatement hearing in front of the council is the culmination of a lengthy staff process involving an assessment of the property by multiple professionals that are qualified to distinguish between an aesthetic dispute and a danger to the community that weeds have reached a point where it's fire hazard, which is the basis for this.
Yes. I was just, thank you for clarifying that. I was actually going to reiterate some of that myself. But thank you for that. That moves us to item number eight, which is business item. And this is a fiscal year 2023-24 audit of the city's basic financial statements. Do we have...
I'd like to invite the Administrative Services Director, Amelia Gabrielle, to join us.
Welcome.
And she can introduce the auditor. He's going to make a presentation and then be available for questions.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amelia Gabrielle, Administrative Services Director with the City of Larkspur. And we have online with us the auditor, Badawi and Associates. So I'm hoping that he's going to be joining us at this moment. And he will be presenting the audit for fiscal year 2023-24 to your council tonight.
Welcome, sir. If it's all right with you, since we have two relatively new council members, if we can pause, I'll pause the conversation maybe every couple of pages if they have any additional questions for you, so that we don't wait all the way to the end. Would that work for your presentation?
Absolutely, please.
Or Amelia. And I just want to offer that because I know this will be the first time that Sarah has seen an auditor, an audit report, and Stephanie has had not as many chances to see one either. So if that's all right with you, I'll find a stopping point if you have questions. Thank you. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for inviting me. So today I will be presenting the results of the fiscal year 2024 audit. I'm actually going to share my screen, and I have a short presentation for you.
We can see it fine in the chambers.
Okay, wonderful. All right. So I'm going to get started here. And again, this is the presentation for the 2024 audit for the City of Larkspur. Agenda for today, I will let you know who the engagement team was, what were the deliverables and the scope of our audit, areas of primary audit risk, the type of audit report we issued, and a brief summary of the numbers in the city's financial statements. Provide some of the required communications as your independent auditors. And then a very brief summary of the new accounting standards that will be impacting the city in the near future. As far as our engagement team, this was a composition of our engagement team. So I was acting as the engagement partner. I had an audit manager, an audit senior, and two professional staff assigned to the audit. And in terms of the deliverables and the scope of our audit, so we were mainly engaged to provide an independent auditory report on the city's basic financial statements. So that's the city's big document that reflects all the city's funds and all the city's assets and liabilities. So that's really the main deliverable of our engagement. In addition to that, because the city is subject to what we call government auditing standards, it does require us to also provide a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. The city is subject to compliance audits of the federal grants. So that is an audit that is focused more on the federal funds that were expended during the year, second compliance audit as well. And then the communication was the governing body, which is what I'm doing today. And we normally issue a letter summarizing that communication to the city council. And I believe we already have issued that letter. And then finally, we perform also agreed-upon procedures on the appropriation limit schedule. As far as areas of primary audit risk, so we had a few areas that normally exist in most audits that we perform. The first area is the risk of management override of controls. And obviously, management is normally the one who is designing the controls and they're monitoring the control. And they're oftentimes in a position to be able to override. So we just have to design audit procedures to at least reduce that risk to an acceptable level, sorry. So those are some of the examples of the procedures we perform. Obviously, start by making sure that we assign more experienced staff to more risky areas of the audit, to incorporate an element of unpredictability in our audit procedures, to look at significant accounting policies and make sure that they're consistently applied, examining any entries prepared by management, reviewing estimates made by management, just evaluating the rationale behind any unusual transaction or any infrequent transactions, and then evaluate also the performer fraud assessment and related party assessment. Another area of risk is, again, auditing standards consider this area to be an area of a higher risk by default. And that's the revenue area and the improper revenue recognition. Again, we don't really have any indication that the city improperly recognized revenue, but it's just an area that tends to be a higher risk in any audit. We rely heavily on confirmations from third parties. So we communicate with the county, with the state, with hotels, with other franchises, with basically a lot of entities that pay money to the city. And we confirm what they paid the city during the fiscal year, and we reconcile that in the city's accounting records. And then we also perform analytical procedures on other city funds. The last area of primary audit risk are estimates. So just estimates in general, anytime the numbers are estimated, it does require a high degree of management involvement and assumptions. So we normally perform procedures to just make sure that those assumptions are free of bias and that those estimates are reasonable given the circumstances. So just an example of some of the numbers that are estimated are the fair value of investments, the useful life of capital assets, the pension liability and the OPEB liability, and also claims liability. As far as auditors' report and the financial statements, so our auditors' report state the standards that we followed. And those are the generally accepted auditing standards and also government auditing standards. We have issued an unmodified opinion. And an unmodified opinion means that we believe the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, that all accounting policies have been consistently applied, that all estimates are reasonable, and that all disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. The next few slides will...
So let me stop you there just for a second because you just explained your procedure and your policies and the law. Is there any questions on that section? It's pretty straightforward describing how an audit works. Okay, no questions. So go ahead, please.
All right. Thank you. So the next few slides are really just going to give you just a bird's-eye view of the city's financial, the numbers in the city's financial statements. So on this slide here is the summary of the city's assets over the last three years. And nothing really worth mentioning. I feel the numbers are consistently consistent year-over-year with some expected growth that we would normally expect. So no major fluctuations over the last three years. And same with the liabilities. This is the summary of the city's liabilities over the last three years. And the only fluctuation really happened two years ago was the pension. As you can see, between '23 and '24, the both pension liability and OPEB liability had been fairly consistent. Otherwise, the city is just paying down debt and no major activities there as well. On this slide here is just really taking city's assets minus liabilities. That's the city's equity or net position. And just wanted to highlight to you that the financial statements reflect those numbers as equity, but a big part of that number is what we consider to be non-spendable. It is invested in the city's streets and roads and infrastructure and other assets. So it's not really in a spendable form. And that's the first number, that's 76 million net investment in capital assets. Then you have amounts that are legally restricted. And those are amounts that can be things like gas tax or anything that is required legally to be used for a specific purpose, grant money and so on. And that amount was about 24 million. And then the unrestricted amount is a deficit, almost $3 million, 2.7 million. I want to say obviously that this is probably the direct result of pension liability and OPEB liability. But nonetheless, it is a deficit number, the unrestricted part of the equity. But keeping in mind also, this is all city funds combined. This is not your general fund. And also, this includes all city's assets and liabilities, including the long-term liabilities such as pension and so on. I will be covering the general fund shortly, but just one more slide here before I move on to the general fund. This is again looking at the overall city operation, and we compare what we call the net cost of service to tax revenue. The net cost of service is the cost of running city departments minus revenues that they are able to bring in on their own. You can see over the last three years that net cost of service has fluctuated quite a bit. In 2022, it was really, there was big fluctuation in pension expense that just really made those numbers negative. But anytime there are grants that are paying for expenses, it will also reduce that number. But the consistent thing is that the tax revenues have been increasing every year. And in 2024, you can see that it was higher than the net cost of service. I can't say that this was consistent, but again, there are a lot of factors in there. So I wouldn't just look at this comparison just in a vacuum. There definitely some other things to consider. But if I were to look at the general fund by itself, the general fund, yes...
Let's just stop just a second before we move to general fund. Any questions on the four, the government-wide financial statements, the four of them that he presented? Yeah, I think Councilmember Andre has a question for you.
Hi, Mr. Brodaway. Thank you for the information. So I probably need another session with you on, you know, the pension and OPEB liability. But I'm trying to understand your slide on the unrestricted, where there's a deficit of 2.788 million. Is that, and you said that was mostly due to the pension and OPEB liability. So does that even out or fluctuate over time? I'm trying to assess the risk of a deficit in that line item, or how should we be interpreting that deficit?
Well, I mean, deficit is never a good thing, no matter how you look at it. So I can't say that this is what we consistently see in every city, that there is a deficit. But at the same time, it is not extremely alarming because we really were looking at very long-term liabilities. Like, if you look two years ago on that same slide, that was, there was no deficit. It was actually a positive 4 million dollar. So, and that was strictly because of fluctuation in the pension liability. So the deficit occurred in the last two years and that because the city went from having a net pension asset and being super-funded in the pension to now going to having a net pension liability again. So is it very concerning? No, because it does fluctuate. And I think the main factors are the pension and OPEB, specifically the pension. But at the same time, it also maybe reflect that on the long-term, that your unrestricted amounts can, may not be sufficient. If you were to, I mean, the financial statements with the balance sheet looks at a scenario where if the city were to just close tomorrow, what would you have to pay? And you will have a deficit if you were to have to liquidate those or pay all those liabilities on that same day. So it's not a very likely scenario. Obviously, that's why when we see a deficit like this, it doesn't impact our audit opinion. We don't necessarily make a comment saying, well, that's a big concern. But I also want to say that for many other cities, we don't see necessarily that deficit, that they have a lot more assets than the liabilities, including the pension and OPEB. So I hope that that kind of clarified that's really looking at the city, including all its long-term liabilities. But when you look at in the short term, obviously, the general fund has a very healthy fund balance. And from our audit perspective, that's really what we focus on, is the short term.
Thank you. I think the city manager wants to elaborate a little bit, too.
Yeah, I think it'd probably be a good idea for the whole council to get a refresher session on how these two liabilities work. They've never fit, in my personal opinion, very well in audits, but it's been necessary over the years of refinement to the government accounting standing boards directions that Mr. Brodaway report. These snapshot time looks at these long-term liabilities. directions that Mr. Badawi report, these snapshot in time looks at these long-term liabilities. To give you a very Reader's Digest summary, because they're very different in the way they work functionally, your OPEB liability is promises that were made back when the city, like many government employers in California, offered medical benefits and retirement, rather robust benefits. We don't do that anymore. That's a closed program. We now participate in a very minimum program for retiree medical benefits. So that number is a snapshot in time of what an actuary has determined ought to be in the bank to to grow and cover that liability over the lifetime of the lives that are covered within the benefit. So that benefit goes down, that liability goes down in two ways. We put money in a trust account, lock it away, and it grows, and it reduces that liability or lives expire. And strategies are built around how you're going to manage that liability until the fact that we close the program will eventually take care of it. The pension liability is very different. That number is a number that CalPERS has given to the city to say, we've already studied our portfolio, and we know we're going to come up short. And so congratulations, you get to make up the shortfall. And so you have now a long-term liability because you're a member of CalPERS, and you've committed to helping fund the system, and this is the number that you're currently short. There are ways to close that gap. The city brought that number down. If you were pulling old audits, you'd notice at one point we brought it down because we asked CalPERS to give us a number we could essentially put on account with them through the issuance of bonds, which is what we did. We essentially refinanced a debt from what CalPERS charges us to a fixed rate that was much lower. So we do the refresher. We can talk about that. We netted several million dollars of savings over the life of that debt. But CalPERS keeps underperforming. People are retiring until that system starts to realize reforms that occurred in 2013. The whole system's having challenges, and we're all struggling to manage that.
So I think we'll we'll ask that at the strategic planning retreat, we have a little primer like you usually do.
It might be better to do it as a session here. I suspect the general public might appreciate that as well, and it's, it may take a little while.
Yeah, and I think we can agendize that later and maybe get a lot of those questions sort of answered then.
That'd be great.
So, sir, you can keep going. You have anything from this, you keep going to the general fund section. I think that'll help Stephanie answer a lot of the.
Thank you. Yes. So so going to the general fund, so what we do is we look at the general fund unrestricted fund balance, that portion of fund balance that have no outside legal restriction on it. And we compare that to the annual expenditures to see how long can the city continue to pay bills just using its fund balance? And as you can see, it's almost 14 months. It's more than a year. And that's a very healthy fund balance, for sure. So that the general fund is a measurement of the city's liquidity because it really just focus on the short term. It focuses on the current obligations and the and the current available assets. So when I said that's what the audit focus on is, because when we determine whether the city's financial position is strong or not, we really are not forecasters. We just look for a 12-month period, and the general fund would be obviously the good indicator of that. So that's my slide for the general fund. And then I heard that there may be some more discussion about pension. I did have a few slides about pension, but and OPEB. But this is really no different than what's in the city's financial statements. Pension and OPEB are numbers that are estimated by actuary. And one of the most significant assumptions that the actuary develop is what we call the discount rate. So just wanted to highlight to you how different the numbers will look like when the discount rate change. So currently, the city uses that middle row, that current rate, which is currently at 6.9%. So and the liability is at 4.5 million. But you can see that it can go up to 14.6 million if that discount rate is lowered by 1%. And it can go back into super funded if that discount rate is increased by 1%. So actuary is the one that's determining the discount rate. And that is very significant to determining what that number is. Similar to pension, OPEB also have assumptions using the discount rate. So I just wanted to highlight to you the same disclosure. Currently, the city's liability is around 7.5 million, and the changes in the discount rate is actually not as significant as in pension. That completes the financial statements part of my presentation. And then my last part of the presentation are the required communications. Any questions on the general fund and those before?
I think we're good.
All right, thank you. Right. So the last part of my presentation is the required communication as your independent auditor. And on this slide here, just highlight to you, sorry, I think I, yeah, sorry. Highlight you our responsibility as the audit firm versus the management's responsibility. So we are mainly responsible for providing an opinion on the city's financial statements. We are responsible for evaluating the internal control over financial reporting, including the tone at the top. We're responsible for evaluating compliance with laws and regulations, for ensuring that the city's financial statements are clear and transparent. And then finally, we are responsible for communicating with the governing body. Management have responsibilities in the audit process. So management is ultimately responsible for the financial statements. Our work does not relieve management from its responsibility. Management is the one responsible for establishing and maintaining internal control over financial reporting, making all financial records available to us during the audit process, establish control that will prevent and detect fraud, inform us of all known and suspected fraud, comply with laws and regulations, and then finally, take corrective action on any audit findings. As far as our independence, as our independent, as you're an independent auditor, it is really solely our responsibility to maintain our independence. We follow the AICPA rules and the California Board of Accountancy rules and regulations. And we evaluate services, additional services that we offer the city that may impair our independence. One of them is preparing the financial statements on behalf of the city. We have an independent reviewer who's not involved in the audit that always review those financial statements before they are issued to meet that, to maintain that independence requirement when we offer such a service. As far as timing of the audit, we believe that the audit was performed within the timeframe communicated to the city. Actually, I think this is probably the earliest we've presented the audit to the council. So we believe that the audit was performed timely. And then obviously, that's a reflection on how well the city's process was in closing and getting ready and prepared for the audit. In terms of significant accounting policies and any unusual transactions. So there was no unusual transactions, but the city did implement a new accounting standard this year, and the financial statements do reflect that new accounting standard. We discussed management estimates before, but just wanted to again bring to your attention that some of the numbers in the financial statements are estimated numbers, and these are examples of some of those numbers. As far as difficulties during our audit process, I'm pleased to say that we encountered no difficulty. We encountered no difficulties. We actually felt that management was very responsive, provided some quality documentation that met our audit requirements. So we're definitely pleased with how things went. As far as adjustments and any unadjusted differences, so management has posted all proposed adjustments, and I don't believe that there were any material adjustments that were proposed. We also had no deficiencies, no material weaknesses identified during our audit. We always have housekeeping items that we communicate to management, but there were really no matters that warranted to be reported to the city council. And then finally, on this last slide here is a summary of the new accounting standards that are coming your way by year of implementation. I mean, I'm happy to go through them if you would like, but obviously, we always have meetings with management where we discuss those standards, how they're going to impact the city, and what the city need to do to get ready for them. With that, I want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity. It's definitely been a pleasure working with the city, and I'm happy to answer any remaining questions.
Thank you, sir. Anything, Amelia, you need to add?
It was a pleasure working with the auditor. They were very responsive, and it was a good partnership. So I just wanted to report on that. I also wanted to report that this is again an unmodified opinion, a clean audit. We are in a strong position from a cash standpoint and fund balances, and I just wanted to report this for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the auditor or of Amelia or staff? No? Thank you very much for that. Nice to see you again. Anybody in our chambers have a question about our financial audit? No? All right. Thank you very much. So we'll close this item.
You should take a motion or receive and
Oh.
receive the audit.
Two things. Anyone online, since I offered a comment to the in-chambers participants, anyone online like to ask a question or make a comment about the audit? Allison, any hands raised?
I think we already raised hands from our Zoom audience members, and there's no public comment.
Thank you. Then we'll close public comment on item 8.1, and I will take a motion to accept the audit as presented. I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Allison?
Councilmember Kandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Margalies?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andre?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes. Thank you, sir, very much. Nice to see you again.
Same here. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
All right, that brings us to adjourning for closed session. Item number nine, and to our audience members, we will be leaving the chambers. You're welcome to stick around, but we may be gone a little while in a closed session meeting. All right, we are returning from to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, after having adjourned to closed session for item 9.1 and 9.2, which was a conference with legal counsel and anticipated litigation, and 9.2, conference with real property negotiators, and we have no reportable action tonight. Thank you very much. We will meet again after January 1st meeting is canceled, and our next city council meeting in this room is January 15th, 2025. Happy holidays, everyone, and Happy New Year.